There's some questions that the city council wants to ask me. I'll be open to questions. I'll hear just a little bit and I do have some stats you want to stat, I need the stats as well. But let me say this real briefly here. That every city and in every county, your most expensive budget will be the police department, and on sheriff's office, and on the fire department. That's something that you probably are already aware of. Normally those are your biggest budgets. So what I came to consider our core, police department, I observed all of the deficiencies and the inadequate resources that had to improve the quality of administrative patrol and also all investigative techniques. We now have equipment in place where as a police department, we are more effective and now more efficient. The property room. Which, there's two things that will get you in trouble as a police department. Communication center, which is commonly known as the dispatch center, and also the evidence room. The evidence room is probably, we're probably about ninety-five percent in compliance. However, there have been some evidence that has been in that property room since 2000. And I told the mayor, I said, "Well, I'm not gonna go to jail behind somebody's insufficient practices." But that will get you in trouble because men and women has went to jail based on that evidence. And if it's not properly placed, then you have sent somebody to prison and or jail without tagging that information properly. In other words, it can be tainted. And so that's one thing we tried to avoid, and so what we did was went to the airport. We have a secure location at the airport where we can house a property room. I created a property room in the airport with cubicles that are labeled. And so if you would call the Texas Rangers in, or anybody from the state, we will pass MB in compliance if anybody would decide in an audit on the police department. And so we have made a tremendous amount of improvements today from where we were eight months ago. I think the council probably needs to know that. And first of all, let me remind this council that the core police department is still in an infrastructural transitional phase. We're still there. And this police department has a wide range of responsibilities for traffic enforcement, to police investigations, and patrol functions. And we have to perform our duties with limited resources. However, what this council needs to understand is that this infrastructure will be a process and is, yes, is also time consuming, so it doesn't happen overnight. To get this police department into its, to establish where it needs to be, it's gonna take time. But have we made improvement? Yes, we have. Yes, we have made tremendous improvement. However, there are some deficiencies that we're facing, but I have not asked the administration for any extra expenses because I know that at this time we don't have it. However, it is, it is a hindrance and a burden on the PD. We need MDTs. A lot of the, that's typically called a mobile data terminal. This allows the Arco Police Department to have access to print information for officers' safety. NCIC, TCIC, which is the information that we use to get information from the state and also local agencies. We're down near those, police motor vehicles. This past weekend, we had two units and went down, misfunction off of one unit. And whether you know it or not, that's not cost effective because when you have to utilize the same unit over and over again, ultimately, it's gonna pay its price where you go out to buy or purchase more units. And so, and so we haven't asked, haven't requested for those units as well. And we also need additional personnel during this infrastructural phase. But as I said before, normally, it's going to take some time for that to happen. In reference to the certain things, I'm not gonna say just for purposes of the law. But you asked a question. Yes, revenue will get better. The question you asked, Mr. Abar, yes, it will get better. Some of the handicap that we experienced is that we first got a ticket writer device, which is an excellent tool in law enforcement. Because what it does, basically, is write citation more efficiently, more effectively than the hard copies. And yes, we can write probably, allows us to write two or three times faster citations on the electronic ticket writers rather than the hard copies. So it makes us more efficient in that aspect of it. But it didn't come without what you call your glitches. The past included Hurricane Harvey, which also sent some of our productivity down. But as far as these ticket writers concerned, they had its glitches. Certain information has to be imputed in those citations, such as geoco, which is almost every street in the city, outside this city, and those areas that borders Fort Bend County. Some information was missing out of it, which in turn, we have to call the developers back and have input that information off in there. And we also have been having problems when we first initially purchased these ticket writers on the court side, on the court side of it. It wasn't none of the administrators fault on the court side of it. It was the developers that had issue with some of these ticket writers that took several months, more than several months, to rectify. And I've been told today that some of those issues have been rectified. And so since those issues have been rectified, then we can, we can use them more effectively now. And so another compounding factor to some of the issues is that in the month of April, we had seven BMVs at the Grinch Mail at Tiscany Apartments. Seven BMVs, and we had burglary buildings as well as other criminal activities. This is the month of April. Month of May, seventeen burglar motor vehicles at the same location. And also three credit card abuse. However, we've got leads on the culprits that was involved in the BMVs and also the credit card abuse. At the same time, we had a burglary building at the airport where two AR-15 rifles were missing, along with suppressors, which are salvores. The issue with that is, is that I've never had a second in command at the PD. Now, if you go to most police departments, they have at least a number two guy or second in command with most police departments. But I have to, on my own leisure, to direct this police department and the officers out of the proper investigations. Because we have a lead on the burglar motor vehicle, and we also have a lead on the individuals who broke in the building at the airport and stole the two AR-15 rifles. The problem with that is, is that if I exhaust all our resources towards that, or the officers exhaust all their resources towards that, the issue is, is that you will have them out on these streets. And that's the problem. And so, and so we have leads on, I'm not gonna give up on the lead. We have identified, I know where the young man's staying at, located that. And the plan is, I'm gonna call Texas City Police Department and see if they can spot that vehicle and have it towed. Tow it as evidence because they use that vehicle to be perpetrators in this criminal episode.
So you can, you can give us the stats, where the PD is at? Instead of all of the, you know, the breakdown and different type, like you're doing now, where you have, what are you doing now there? Kind of led to that? We've vetted it, just the stats, or what the council knows that this, I guess we all wanna get, the stats? If they wanna get the stats?
In the month of May, 2019, we had four hundred and seventy property checks, six accidents, eighty-one calls for service, one hundred and sixty-six citations. And also, you have to also add, a contributing factor of that is, is that since we're at the mercy of the Fort Bend County Sheriff's Office Communication Center, we often have to respond to their calls outside this city. And that's on a daily basis, which also takes away our resources in reference to some of the things we have to do. Month of June, six hundred and forty-three property checks, two accidents, sixty-five calls for services, and one hundred and eighty-four citations. Sixteen assisting other agencies, sixteen calls assisting other agencies. And honestly, May and June, just for you to have, just have your knowledge of that. And there any questions, you have to me?
Council, questions?
Captain Woman Jackson? I, I, no, they should have been there before. It's been happening.
Well, I sure appreciate it, sir. That's what I didn't get responsible for.
I apologize. I apologize, but I wanted to see you face to face and let you know we're on this point.
Thank you so much.
We're on this point, and it's here.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, we have that situation as we speak.
About a thirty day cushion in our timeline, so we're gonna bump into that cushion. What we need to do is I think the county has indicated they are on board with the concept of the broad strokes. They like the project, they like the idea of the city getting a water plant, wastewater plant, middle school, all those things. Now it's just getting into the details. Obviously, everybody wants to see the numbers, you know, and everybody wants to make a deal that's good for the city, it's good for the county, and makes sense for the developer. So what I would ask you guys to do is, you know, between now and your next city council meeting, we need to have probably a series of meetings with some of your council members, whoever you all designate, where we can really get into the numbers. Cost of service is important, participation rate is important, county participation rate is important. What projects and project costs go into the package is important. You know, how the board seats are allocated, the county says, hey, look, you know, we might participate more if we've got more say on the board. I mean, all that's in play. And as Tina mentioned, it's just, at this point, we're at the business negotiation standpoint. We need to get in a room with all the folks that we can. Obviously, we don't want to do that in a public setting, in a public meeting. We need to have a committee that kind of goes through that and that makes a recommendation. But at the end of the day, we want every city council member and every county commissioner to have every question answered, right? Then do us any good for somebody to be sitting up here and saying, well, I don't know the answer to this question. I want to know the answer to this question. So my ask of you is to table the two items tonight, but I would also ask that y'all commit to the next thirty days. Let's, you know, roll up our sleeves, let's get into the numbers, and let's get the business deal done if there's a business deal to be had. I can tell you, Nino's not looking, Nino wants to make a reasonable deal, right? It's gotta be good for him, it's gotta be good for you guys. He's gonna make a thirty-five million dollar investment in the city of Arcoa, and he needs a reasonable return on that. And if we can get to all that and still satisfy cost of service and all those other issues that are out there, then we'll have a deal, and if we don't, we don't. So that's my ask for you guys tonight is, maybe y'all can talk among yourselves. Who might be, I think you can have two without having to, four. You know, maybe designate two people who can be in a room and kind of get into the numbers and roll up their sleeves and, you know, talk with the county, talk with us, make sure everybody understands what all the numbers look like, and let's try to come back in thirty days with a deal that everybody's got all their questions answered on. And I say we'll have, you know, a couple of people in the room. If we want to do a workshop where we come back and we show that to the full city council, I think that's great. Right? We're not trying to, it's just, we're gonna have to have a series of meetings. It might be a meeting on Thursday, and then again on Friday, and again on Monday. And obviously, with the numbers provisions, you can't do all that. So I'll leave all that to you guys. I'm happy to answer any questions you have tonight, but I really think what needs to happen is, you know, let's go roll up our sleeves and get it done.
One question.
Yeah, so you've got two big ones. One is the schools gotta make a decision, and we gotta give the school a, here's what the price of the land is, and here's what we need them to construct or what we're gonna construct as a part of the tourist package. And then he's always got a contract with the current owner of the land where he's got to make a decision, I think in September or a November close on the property, so those are our time drop. And Tina, I know, has seen the preliminary numbers, but she's just getting hired tonight. I haven't had a single conversation with her, she's done this before. I'm sure she will have questions, comments, and input on the numbers. It's just, you know, it's go time at this point.
The council has to set a schedule, when, who, you all have to pick two to go, and meet. They'll have one Tuesday night, and then go back to council. So yeah, you know, put someone on the council's road. I guess I could, though, but I still have to.
I would like to go on, but once again, I mean, you need to make sure that I can coordinate these kind of meetings around how it works. So we're gonna have to work around.
We'll have to do just that. The setup's up and we'll be getting with you, and so some downplaying.
Red, seven in the morning, six AM in the morning, working. If you look at, y'all look for Nate, we'll get the county involved and get them, and try to get meetings set for next week, is that a bet? And who are the two that we're gonna, got?
Does the county have to, does everybody need to be in the room at the same time?
I think so, because part of the discussion the county's gonna have is, what projects are in? You know, what are we paying for? What level, are you participating at? That might dictate what level they participate at. You know, how many members of the board do, are we gonna get? That may dictate what level participation at. So if we can get all, it's like a spider web, like it all works together, and you can't really take it, hey, let's just look at it in the vacuum, what the city's gonna do, does that impact what the county's gonna do? At the end of the day, you know, he's gotta get to a number of, you know, of dollars from the city and the county on top of the M and B, and how y'all split that up between you and the county really isn't our issue, we just gotta get to a total number. So if there's even some negotiation between you and the county that might be involved.
Before we meet with you and the county, probably we need to get our house in over there.
I agree.
So I think we really need to meet with our city attorney and our financial advisor and get our game plan put together before we start meeting, um, the outside.
Yeah, and look, and just all these discussions, all these meetings, this is a natural part of the process. I mean, this is just how the sausage is made. It's an important part of the process, it is a process. And, you know, we look forward to spending the next thirty days with you guys, cashing up.
So I make a motion for the consideration of possible action for, or should say, I would make a motion to be tabled, consideration of possible action for order two zero one nine eight zero seven, damn, zero nine eight.
Motion by Mr. April, second by Mr. Jones, all these coming, two zero one nine, zero seven, two zero nine eight. All in place.
Unless there's anyone that has any questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, so tonight we had three things on your agenda that we'd prior accomplish. One's procedural and two are substantive. Procedural one is to hold the public hearing on the creation of the turf, we did that earlier. You've got two ordinances on your agenda, and one is creating the turf, and one is consenting to the creation of the management district. You know, at this point, I think when we first came to you a couple of months ago, so we've had a very aggressive schedule, we wanted to get all this wrapped up to the line.
I actually got it. I like the big copy so I can read them. I bought extra ones just in case. So, thirty-second backup history on this particular tract, and I believe we do have the owners of the property here as well. This came before you, and the plaque was recorded back in, I bought the recording for that as well. Back in August, almost a year ago in twenty eighteen, with a bunch of different owners, this plaque came in and it was recorded. It was approved by City of Arcoa, went through Fort Bend County, Commissioner's Court, got filed on the record. And so at that time, there was a different set of owners. The owners at that time was the Quintet Capital Group. They had been to put a storage building on there and had the plaque drawn up and recorded in accordance with the design that they were going to do. Since then, we've had a new set of owners that have come in, and they have a different program, pretty much the same thing, but a different layout of the site plan. When they went in and did the different layout of the site plan, it required them to do some things differently with regards to the subdivision plan. If you noticed before, you know, the plaque was a little bit different, it was shaped a little different. Same acreage, same number of reserves, but it was done a little bit different. When they, the new group bought the tract of land, they came in and just basically, you know, relocated their detention pond, it outfall to a different area. Again, they're still looking at doing the storage facilities and what have you. By doing that, they had to come in and do the current configuration, which you're looking at right now, that is currently in front of them. They, of course, by doing that, had to go back through the whole process. They'll have to go through Arcoa, we'll approve it, and then from us, they have to go through Fort Bend County. And Fort Bend County requires them to get engineering approval, environmental approval, drainage district approval, all those guys. We have been in communication, constant communication with Fort Bend County and their departments to make sure that we're all on the same page. We provide each other our comments, each other's comments, to make sure that they're all getting addressed. Up to this time, we would, from staff level, recommend approval of the subdivision plaque, subject to the only approval that we did not have, and it's not a holdup, it just, we didn't have that approval from them, but we think that they're there, is the drainage district. And so we'd recommend approval of it, subject to them providing us the letter from Fort Bend County Drainage District. Other than that, we got everybody else's approval. They're a little bit slow over in Drainage District, and we wouldn't let the city sign off until we get that. I'll entertain any questions that anybody may have with respect to the subdivision plaque. And I'll add one note on to this right there as well. There's a lot of activity going on over here in this whole area right here. A lot of it's not within the boundaries of our jurisdiction there in our H and J, and so we're keeping close watch on it. You have this going on, we've got the Charleston mud that's kind of going on over here to the east, to the north. The mobile home RV park has not gone away, they're still out there. And so I just need the commission as well, and explaining is going to be aware of that. Because I do have, one of my favorite commissioners, two, two, two of them, and so those are some things that we just need to be aware of. At this time, I'll entertain any questions with regards to the plaque only first, and then after the plaque, I'll entertain questions beyond that, as it relates to plating matters and development matters.
Can we hear from?
I don't have any questions, first of all. I want to thank you for speeding up the process and recommending to approve it. It was already approved, like you said. The only correction I would say is, we have a Quintet Capital is the current owner. AAA Storage was the previous owner, but we still get the name, so that's just a clerical mistake, that's all. The, on the plaque, this thing, I don't think there's any change other than, like you said, we removed the detention pond from the front on the highway six to the back, as we think, so we're waiting for our approval. To give you an update on the drainage, the drainage, we got the pre-approval, kind of, they made some comments, then the comments that we made incorporated, so it should be coming to you pretty soon.
Yeah, and when we say constant communication, I mean, the drainage district office is less than a mile from our office. I see those guys on a regular basis, when we go into our Arcoa business.
Also, yeah, the fire department has also given the approval, and text orders, most of them have given the approvals, have not approvals, they made all the comments, and so it's just updating the comments and giving back to the entities so that we can find that one. To give you an update also, the city council and the mayor, the city staff, we've already got the approval for the two text art approvals, one is a forty feet approval we have, and the other is twenty-five feet approval on highway six. You might have seen it, that we have started the work. It should be done, most probably by this week, coming week, if there's no rain. So the rain has been fully in us, not the wind, but the contract is signed, they started the work, and it has been there, so it should be done. So we're waiting for the city, I mean, the city approval, delaying approval also, so that we can start the work, um, the third quarter. Thank you.
Question on this file?
Yes?
Yeah, I thought I saw you here, not a problem.
No, I hadn't even seen them. That was from last year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I went through it last year.
Yeah, we approved it last year, and we approved it last year, that the detention pond was approved.
I know, it's in the back.
No, it's back, so we have to go through.
Other than that, that's all I have for my report with regards to the subdivision plaque. Move by Mr. April, second by Mr. Jones, all in place.
There was a deal that I mean, I mean, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. The other item that I wanted to just update on, which we kind of touched on earlier, was the wastewater treatment plant, and obviously, within the next thirty days, we hope to have that online. There was an inspection done last week, I think it was last week, the week before last. And so there are some just minor things that needed to be taken care of, and so hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have that online. Other than that, with regards to updates, that's all I have for you this evening. The rest of it will come in next reservation, technical by the pool.
Where are we at in Rose? Six thirteen Rose.
I'll have to get back with you on that, okay, on six thirteen Rose.
The driveway.
Oh, 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 Rose and Rose and Rose, okay, okay, okay. So I did send, we have not issued a permit. The homeowner, landowner sent in a request for a driveway. She sent in for an application for a driveway, and came back and submitted an application wanting to put a driveway in. I think the appropriate thing is that she gets a letter from the city and not from our office saying that you're gonna have to take that out, because for us to give her a letter from Colusion Incorporated, it's like, you know, who are y'all? Y'all nobody. And so I think it needs to go from, I shot an email out today to Gwen, to advise her to let it come from, with a city letterhead on it, telling them that they're gonna need to remove that driveway over there on Rose.
Because at the end of the day, the county never didn't set those codes.
They were illegally set, it's one of those weekend warrior deals where they just came in in the cloak of darkness, put it in, and, I mean, you know, it's, it happens. It happens all over the world, it doesn't happen just in Arcoa, but when they get caught, they have to pay the price. And so Gwen will be sending them a notice on the letterhead, city letterhead, letting them know, or responding to her email on the city letterhead, and we'll include the county as well, so that way they all know about it.
If everything goes well, we probably want to meet, you know, here in August, early August, because we plan on having about a hundred percent CDs by mid-August, that y'all's August work, or council meeting. And so with that, you know, again, if the pricing is appropriate and y'all want to move forward, then we'll be going out for solicitations, or bidding, and then, to be permitting, then bidding, into September, and then essentially into October for a council review. That would start construction, probably November or February, if that's what.
You said earlier, August, though, we're talking, I mean, I'm looking at the county, I know we had a council meeting.
It wouldn't be a full council meeting, it'd just be, again, we want to take each other's input, it could be a full council meeting, but it's more of a workshop, because we're gonna go room by room, we're gonna look at, you know, lashable receptables, data ports, you know, things like that that go inside the building. It's not really appropriate for a full council review. So if council wanted to say, you know, a couple of people in the council and the administrative staff, they want to be involved, do you need any more from P D?
Any questions, Montez?
At the last meeting, I actually worked with mature outside of the building, like, uh?
Yeah, Mr. Mount, that's Mel panel. Let me pull up, I had, actually went back and looked at that. I had provided the products on the first meeting. It's easier if I show it to you. So this is the original presentation of the deal, and so essentially, the one that's on the board, and then as Z channel, it's a little to the substrate, and then the metal panel goes over there.
So looking at, if we get this today, I don't think we can do something today and be asked to hold it today.
Yeah, that's what she's asking us to do.
I know, but I don't think that's a good thing to do.
I agree.
Things like this, where you're spending money, you have to at least think about it a little bit, you can't bring it to me and say, you need to do this, okay, we may need to do this, or we may not need to do it today. And if it's not effective until October, why would we have it until in July? It's not gonna happen until October the first. Like, maybe they at least have it until August. And if we can't, then maybe it's too much of a rush.
So my recommendation is to put it in the budget plan for next year, and then when the T M L insurance comes up for renewal next year, and if it's in the budget, we can go forward with it. And if it doesn't make the budget cut, then we won't be able to. No questions for Mr.? I made a motion that we table a reservation, uh, two zero seven, zero nine, nineteen, to wait for, uh, the upcoming budget planning.
Question, Bob, Mr.? As well, making my decision. Mr. Jones, all in place?
Hi, our city's up for renewal of the medical benefits to, uh, T M L Health. And I came to the council today to ask council to consider contributing either a percentage or dollar amount to, uh, beneficiaries or dependents. At this time, if you look at the highlighted areas, that is in yellow, the current option that we're seeking is what's highlighted in yellow. And if you look to your far left, employee plus spouse, the premium for that is one thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Currently, the city pays for insurance for the employees, but because the premiums are so high, we need employees, none of the employees can cover their spouses or their children at this time. So if you look at employee plus children, it's one thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. Employee plus family is two thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty cents. If you deduct the seven sixty-seven ninety from the employee plus spouse, the employee's responsibility to pay on a monthly basis, seven hundred ninety dollars and ninety-four cents. With many employees, they cannot, they can't, they can't afford it. They can't cover their spouses, and they can't cover their children. So I'm coming to council this evening to ask council for consideration of contributing either a dollar amount or a percentage that will allow for the city employees to be able to cover their family. At this time, the city covers the employee only at a traffic percent. So again, employee plus spouse, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, seven hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-four cents. Employee plus one child, or child, five hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Employee plus his family, or she, her family, one thousand four ninety-seven point three million online.
I mean, I understand the situation, and health insurance is always a great, you know, for just about every individual in this country. One of the things that, this is, this would be a non-budgeted item, because right now, you know, everything is budgeted for all the way till the end of September.
It would start October, it would start October.
October first is when we do budget start. You know, so in the next couple of months, we'll be starting the budget process. So what I would recommend is that you would put a proposal in the upcoming budget. And then, once again, I mean, we'll have to sort through all the expenses and all the income to the city and see where it falls.
If the city is going, I'm coming to you today because if the city is going to consider, I need you to make a, I need that answer today, because I have to submit that to T M L. Again, me and Monica would, we would, you know, prepare the budget for it the next time, but I need to have some sort of answer, either we're going to or we're not going to contribute. I just need to know if you want to contribute a percentage or a dollar amount. But I can't, if not, we just have to go and look this is right now.
I mean, Monica knows very well, and I mean, currently, the city is running a deficit, which is the first time we've ever done that since I've been here. So, and there's a lot of extraordinary expenses, I understand, especially from the hurricane that affected city walls and that.
But we've run everything back when we paid off from the first game.
We're running a deficit, and then what you're asking me to do is add to that deficit. And I mean, we all have to look at, how for the citizens' dollars that they pay into the city.
You said the attorney?
That's it, Mr. Town.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll.
What is the capacity of the plant right now? Because it was just expanded, right?
It's, right now, it's currently five hundred, it's being expanded to six hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons per day, and it should come online probably within the next thirty days, through what?
It's not online.
That's correct, no, sir. Yes, sir. Good, I haven't seen, this is about the resolution number zero seven, zero nine, nineteen, pertaining to its, uh, employees, these two would be on.
Capacity of the plant is half million gallons per day?
Um, it's, it's just, it, it's a, the twenty-five percent that you're getting is based on the incremental value that you're creating. And my understanding of the operator, of the development, is there, there will be some commercial space in there as well, so you'll be generating some sales tax revenues. In terms of your question, can it be a different number, sure, everything's a negotiation. But again, thinking about, you know, if you're, if you're ratcheting down your participation, where does that leave the county? And I, I also understand that this is a bigger picture, right? It's not just about a water and treatment plant, but it's about the future growth, not just in the subdivision, but about the future growth of the city.
Yeah, I mean, they were nice enough to provide me with that financial stretch, so I ran some different numbers. And, you know, I realized that, I mean, they have to make enough money to fund bonds and be able to get the money back for their infrastructure. But the split that I thought was important, to cover the city's expenses and possibly generate a little bit more revenue for the city, but still allow financial stability for the subdivision. The stability of like a sixty-five, twenty-five split.
So, that's a business negotiation, that's a business deal negotiation, and I understand that the parties are here, so I'm not sure that's something you want to do in an open session.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. Abrams.
Past few weeks, we have been discussing, we have talked about, just bringing to you, our financial advisory for the city. And the city has signed an agreement with Masters and Advisors, or Financial Advisor, municipal financial advisor. And our financial advisor is Miss Tina Peterman, she is here this evening. And Tina, let's just come forward and give, introduce yourself to council, just give a brief overview of what your services will be to the city of Arco.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, been here a couple of times, so recognize your faces. My name is Tina Adias Peterman, I'm with Masters and Advisors. We are a Houston-based company, we serve over three hundred and forty clients. The services that we provide is, the way I like to explain it is, when the city is entering into a bond transaction or is working through the municipal management district that you're contemplating creating, that we sit on the same side of the table as you all, side by side, with Miss Tealer and your counsel, and we make sure that the transaction is being properly structured. The way I like to say it is, you know, we're, we have a fiduciary responsibility to you, to the city. We're there to watch out for you, to protect your interests, to make sure you're getting a fair transaction and execution all along. And so, it's an honor and privilege for me to be here with you all tonight, and I look forward to serving the city and helping you grow, grow responsibly. And for me, it's just very exciting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, you had a chance to look at the proposal of the subdivision that's being presented in hand.
So, yes, sir, we've looked at the documents, we've looked at the numbers. I'd like to work with the Mueller Group and their financial advisor, they've got someone who does the same thing that I do on their side. I'd like to dig into the assumptions a little more closely, and we've had some of those preliminary conversations. So, we've looked at it, I'm, I'm not in a position to say I've answered all of my questions, but it's, on its face, it, it seems like everything looks like the way it's supposed to.
So, one of the things that I've been bringing up in the last few council meetings is the percentage split between the developers and the city of Arco, the seventy-five, twenty-five split. You know, I'm very concerned about that split, you know, similar to what Mr. DeCarr talked about when we were proceeding. And do you have any opinion on that split?
So, I would tell you, for as many of the other TERs's that we represent, generally, is a hundred percent participation. So, seeing a split of partial participation in the TERs, that's actually not something that we see very often. And I, and I understand, the way I understand it, the concern is ensuring that the city will have the operating funds to, to handle the growth that's coming with the subdivision. I would like to look at those numbers a little more closely in connection with the Mueller Group and Compass Land Development. I also understand that there are potentially some other parties that may participate in the TERs, and they are also looking at that split, that third party being the county. And so, there's, there's a, there's a lot of moving parts to this equation. It's not just the city's participation in the TERs, but the county's as well.
Because like our citizen, instead, I mean, the city is going to be responsible for police protection in that area. Of course, we're going to cost the city money, higher protection, you know, you know, the, the subdivision will build the infrastructure, of course, for the water. You know, the city will actually be providing water to a certain, for the subdivision and whatnot. There are some city services that cost the city money.
And my understanding on the water, trip, on the water plant, is that that will be a city-owned asset, and therefore, the connections and the revenue that's coming from those new additional connections will stay with the city. And so, in theory, I'm assuming that, and again, I, we're, we're just starting to get into the numbers, but I would think that those, those connections would help to pray the cost, the operating costs, right? The capital investment, that's taken care of, and so, you know, again, these are, these are things that we would like to understand a little bit better.
Question on those numbers, can those numbers be changed from the seventy-five, twenty-five, which is a small amount for the city, to be forty-five, fifty-five, or even sixty-four? Because twenty-five is a small working capital.
So, so remember, the twenty-five is just off of the increment, right?
Tax code, the whole of the public hearing, at seven twenty-three PM, one two, July ninth, two thousand and nineteen, most than seven. What by twenty-one, if in five, twenty-one, present on January seventh, seven, seven, five, four, five, for the purpose of conservative. Establish your investment zone number one, city of Arco, we located within the boundaries of the city. All persons are invited to attend the hearing and speak for or against the creation of this reinvestment zone number one, to close boundaries of concept, tax, increment, finance. Written or oral statements will be considered. The legal description and bounded amount of proposed reinvestment zone number one. Our own file and our, and our, and opened for a public inspection in the office of the city secretary of Arco, city, Arco. Thirty-two, two, twenty-two, Arco, Texas, seven, seven, five, oh, three. Questions or requests for additional information may be directed to Ms. Cantor, city secretary. City secretary at Arco, Texas, Idaho, phone number two eight one four two one, zero six, zero six.
It's a little bit better on, on the west side, but it's, it's still, it's still a problem there. And I just wanted to touch base with you all on that, and see if there's anything that we could do on that.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarr.